We'll call this meeting of Lima City Council to order. We'll begin tonight's meeting with the invocation by Councilor Miles, followed by the pledge of allegiance.
Father, we thank you for this evening, Lord. We thank you for the opportunity to come out and to conduct the business of this city, Father. Lord bless those who are gathered here tonight, Heavenly Father, who have come out in this cold weather, Heavenly Father, to be concerned about what is going on in our city. Father bless our mayor and his administration, Heavenly Father. Give them wisdom, Lord God, to guide them, Lord God, to help our city to prosper. And, Lord, bless us as council members, Lord God. Lord God, for we each have a desire to serve, Father. But, Lord God, give us your heart to serve, Lord God, so that we will bring you honor and glory. In Jesus' name, amen.
Amen.
Our pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic of the United States, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Let the clerk call the roll.
Counselor Gordon.
Here.
Counselor McLean.
Here.
Counselor Lowe.
Here.
Counselor Crayer.
Here.
Counselor Adams.
Here.
Counselor Glenn.
Here.
Counselor Miles.
Here.
And Counselor Nixon.
Here. Are there any amendments to tonight's agenda?
Mr. President.
Mr. McLean.
We need to add to our consent calendar the Allen County Board of Health minutes. And also, we need to add Neighborhood Concerns to the reports of committee.
Second. The motion in the second is to amend tonight's agenda by adding the Allen County Board of Health minutes to the consent calendar and adding the Neighborhood Concerns Committee report to the reports of committees. Is there any discussion? All those in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? The motion carries. We have a public hearing this evening. We'll have the clerk read the notice.
Notice is hereby given that on March 13th, 2017, at 7:00 PM in the council chambers at 50 Town Square, Lima, Ohio, a public hearing will be held regarding to modify the applicable city zoning code for a parcel located at 939-941 West Spring Street from Residential 2 to Business 1 within Lima, Allen County, Ohio. The petition is for use as a dance studio on the ground floor of the existing building. This petition is initiated by Bart Mills, DBAMMC Lima LLC, and has been endorsed by the City Planning Commission. Any person desiring to be heard on said matter may do so at the time and place herein specified. The report's maps and other documents pertaining to the above request are on file in the office of the Clerk of Council and are open to public inspection.
Is there anybody in the audience that wishes to speak to the issue of rezoning, the parcel located at 939 to 941 West Spring? Please come forward, state your name and address for the record. Is there anybody in the audience that would like to speak to the issue of rezoning, the parcel located at 939 to 941 West Spring? For the third and final call, is there anybody in the audience that would like to speak to the issue of rezoning, the parcel located at 939 to 941 West Spring? Seeing none, we'll declare the public hearing closed. Next is the consent calendar.
Mr. President.
Counselor Adams.
I move that item A be received, filed, and approved, and item B be received and filed.
Second.
The motion in the second is to receive, file, and approve item A and to receive and file item B. Is there any discussion? All those in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? The motion carries. Communication number one.
From the Director of Community Development regarding legislation for lease tax assessments.
Mr. President.
Counselor Crayer.
I move that communication number one be received and filed.
Second. The motion in the second is to receive and file communication number one. Is there any discussion? All those in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? The motion carries. Communication number two.
From the Finance Director regarding legislation for, uh, yes, I should put it wrong there, for amendments to the 2017 budget.
Mr. President.
Counselor Adams.
What she said, no. I move that communication numbers two be received and filed legislations on tonight's agenda.
Second.
The motion in the second is to receive and file communication number two. Is there any discussion? All those in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? The motion carries. Communication number three.
From the City Engineer regarding legislation to enter into contract with Executive Management Services, Inc.
Mr. President.
Counselor Gordon.
I move that communication number three be received and filed.
Second.
The motion in the second is to receive and file communication number three. Is there any discussion? All those in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? The motion carries. Communication number four.
From the City Engineer regarding legislation to enter into a contract with R.D. Jones Excavating.
Mr. President.
Counselor Gordon.
I move that communication number four be received and filed.
Second.
The motion in the second is to receive and file communication number four. Is there any discussion? All those in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? The motion carries. Communication number five.
From the Deputy Director of Parks regarding legislation to enter into a contract with Merrimore Industries.
Mr. President.
Counselor Gordon.
I move that communication number five be received and filed.
Second.
The motion in the second is to receive and file communication number five. Is there any discussion? All those in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? The motion carries. Communication number six.
From the Director of Public Works requesting legislation to approve modifications for Lima City Schools around Lima Stadium Park.
Mr. President.
Counselor Gordon.
I move that communication number six be received and filed.
Second.
The motion in the second is to receive and file communication number six. Is there any discussion?
No. And request the, to have the law director draw up any legislation necessary.
Second.
Okay. The amended motion, the second, is to receive and file communication number six and to authorize the law director to prepare the necessary legislation. Is there any discussion? All those in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? The motion carries. Communication number seven.
From the Director of Public Works requesting legislation to accept and expend $300,000 from Dominion East Gas.
Mr. President.
Counselor Gordon.
I move that communication number seven be received and filed and authorize the law director to draw up any necessary legislation.
Second.
The motion, the second, is to receive and file communication number seven and to authorize the law director to prepare the necessary legislation. Is there any discussion? Mr. President. Mr. Lowe.
Yes, I just want to make sure that the secretary puts this on record. I did speak with those over at Dominion Gas. This part of Jackson that is going to cross over behind the church, I had requested when they first came to us with this project, I thought it would be ideal for the young kids of the city that attended Lima Senior, for that part of that street to be named, which may be Davenport Drive or something like that, after our first African-American chief of police. They was, I was told that they would have to change a lot of things on their addresses and their letterheads, this, that, and the other. I hope that the city can find some way, or they could find some way to at least kind of subname that street or put a placard or something. I think we need to have something over there to let the kids know a little bit more who he was and his history in this city. Just thank you.
Thank you, Counselor Lowe. Is there any further discussion? All those in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? The motion carries. Communication number eight.
From the Director of Public Works requesting consent for dedication of Lima Stadium Park.
Mr. President.
Counselor Gordon.
I move that communication number eight be received and filed.
Second.
The motion, the second, is to receive and file communication number eight.
Mr. President, I need to amend.
Is there any need for legislation on this?
Yes.
Okay.
And request the necessary legislation from the law director.
The motion, the second, is to receive and file communication number eight and to authorize any necessary legislation. Is there any discussion? All those in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? The motion carries. Communication number nine.
From the Fire Chief regarding legislation to enter into a contract with Sutton Corporation.
Mr. President.
Counselor Miles.
I move that communication number nine be received and filed.
Second.
The motion, the second, is to receive and file communication number nine. Is there any discussion? All those in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? The motion carries. Communication number 10.
From the Director of Utilities requesting legislation to enter into a contract for janitorial services.
Mr. President.
Counselor McLean.
I move that communication number 10 be received and filed and authorize the law director to prepare any necessary legislation.
Second.
The motion, the second, is to receive and file communication number 10 and to authorize the law director to prepare any necessary legislation. Is there any discussion? Mr. President. Mr. Lowe.
Who would these individuals be hired through? Is this a temporary service?
No, it's a company.
Okay, thank you.
Bid it up.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Is there any further discussion? All those in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? The motion carries. Communication number 11.
From the Director of Utilities regarding legislation to allow forbidding an award of contract for painting of St. Paul Elevated Botter Tower.
Mr. President.
Counselor McLean.
I move that communication number 11 be received and filed.
Second.
The motion, the second, is to receive and file communication number 11. Is there any discussion? All those in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? The motion carries. Communication number 12.
From Artspace Lima requesting legislation to hold the rally in the square.
Mr. President. Counselor Lowe.
I move that communication number 12 be received and filed legislations on tonight's agenda.
Second.
The motion, the second, is to receive and file communication number 12. Is there any discussion? All those in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? The motion carries. Communication number 13.
From the Law Director regarding legislation to renew the telecommunications moratorium.
Mr. President.
Counselor Gordon.
I move that communication number 13 be received and filed legislations on tonight's agenda.
Second.
The motion, the second, is to receive and file communication number 13. Is there any discussion? All those in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? The motion carries. Communication number 14.
From the Deputy Law Director regarding legislation for standards for parking motor vehicles.
Mr. President.
Counselor Gordon.
I move to refer this communication and all related ordinances back to the Public Works Committee for further discussion.
Second.
The motion, the second, is to receive and file communication number 14 and refer it and all related ordinances to the Public Works Committee. Is there any discussion? All those in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? The motion carries. Communication number 15.
From the Law Director requesting legislation to modify two deputy clerk, two positions.
Mr. President.
Counselor Adams.
I move that communication number five be received, filed, and the law director be authorized to prepare any necessary legislation to comply with the request.
Second.
Second.
The motion, the second, is to receive and file communication number 15 and to authorize the law director to prepare any necessary legislation. Is there any discussion? All those in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? The motion carries. Reports of committees, the Neighborhood Concerns Committee meeting.
Mr. President.
The Neighborhood Concerns Committee had a meeting on March the 6th, 6:00 PM, and
it was concerning the lacknip lease agreement. All the councilmen have received a copy of the report, and I'd like to make a motion that my report be accepted.
Second.
The motion, the second, is to receive, file, and approve the Neighborhood Concerns Committee report as submitted by Counselor Lowe. Is there any discussion? All those in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? The motion carries. Ordinance 3717.
This is the second reading establishing the positions and classifications herein after set forth and fixing the salary and compensation of such positions and classifications, repealing existing inconsistent ordinances as herein described.
Mr. President.
Counselor Adams.
I move that ordinance 37 day 17 be set, placed on third reading.
Second.
The motion, the second, is to place ordinance 3717 on third reading. Is there any discussion?
Mr. President.
Counselor Adams.
Notice has gone out, but publicly I'm gonna, I want to announce the Finance Committee will be meeting on this issue March 21st, a week from Tuesday, at 6:00 PM in these chambers. Thank you.
All right, thank you. Is there any further discussion?
There is.
All those in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? The motion carries. Ordinance 3817.
Authorizing the mayor to amend the lease agreement with Lima Allen County Neighbors and Partnership, Inc., for 1440 West Spring Street.
Mr. President. Counselor Lowe.
I move that ordinance 3817 be placed on third reading.
Second.
The motion, the second, is to place ordinance 3817 on third reading. Is there any discussion? All those in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? The motion carries. Ordinance 4217.
Loving special assessments for property maintenance co-charges on premises in the city of Lima, Ohio.
Mr. President.
Counselor Crayer.
I move the ordinance 4217 to pass on its first reading.
Second.
The motion, the second, is to pass ordinance 4217 on its first reading. Is there any discussion? We'll have the clerk call the roll.
Counselor Miles.
Yes.
Counselor Nixon.
Yes.
Counselor Gordon.
Yes.
Counselor McLean.
Yes.
Counselor Lowe.
Yes.
Counselor Crayer.
Yes.
Counselor Adams.
Yes.
Counselor Glenn.
Yes.
Ordinance 4217 has been passed on its first reading by an eight to zero vote. Ordinance 4317.
Amending the 2017 annual budget.
Mr. President.
Counselor Adams.
I move that ordinance 43-17 be passed on its first reading.
Second.
The motion, the second, is to pass ordinance 4317 on its first reading. Is there any discussion? We'll have the clerk call the roll.
Counselor Miles.
Yes.
Counselor Nixon.
Yes.
Counselor Gordon.
Yes.
Counselor McLean.
Yes.
Counselor Lowe.
Yes.
Counselor Crayer.
Yes.
Counselor Adams.
Yes.
Counselor Glenn.
Yes.
Ordinance 4317 has been passed on its first reading by an eight to zero vote. Ordinance 4417.
Amending the city zoning map to Class 1 business for a parcel located at 939-941 West Spring Street, and the city of Lima is herein described.
Mr. President. Counselor Lowe.
I move that ordinance 4417 be passed on its first reading.
Second.
The motion, the second, is to pass ordinance 4417 on its first reading. Is there any discussion?
Mr. President.
Mr. Lowe.
Yeah, I'd like to say congratulations to Mr. Mills. When he first took on that project, I was able to go in there a couple times, and he actually helped me out on a few issues. I wish you all the best, and I hope that the dance school is very successful. Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor Lowe. Any further discussion? We'll have the clerk call the roll.
Counselor Miles.
Yes.
Counselor Nixon.
Yes.
Counselor Gordon.
Yes.
Counselor McLean.
Yes.
Counselor Lowe.
Yes.
Counselor Crayer.
Yes.
Counselor Adams.
Yes.
Counselor Glenn.
Yes.
Ordinance 4417 has been passed on its first reading by an eight to zero vote. Ordinance 4517.
Granting Artspace Lima permission to maintain and use the stage in the northwest quadrant of the city square for the Artspace Rally in Square Series.
Mr. President. Counselor Lowe.
I move that ordinance number 4517 be passed on its first reading.
Second.
The motion, the second, is to pass ordinance 4517 on its first reading. Is there any discussion? We'll have the clerk call the roll.
Counselor Miles.
Yes.
Counselor Nixon.
Yes.
Counselor Gordon.
Yes.
Counselor McLean.
Yes.
Counselor Lowe.
Yes.
Counselor Crayer.
Yes.
Counselor Adams.
Yes.
Counselor Glenn.
Yes.
Ordinance 4517 has been passed on its first reading by an eight to zero vote. Ordinance 4617.
Authorizing the mayor to enter into a contract with Sutton Corporation to purchase a 2017 Sutton Model SL-75 aerial ladder fire engine for the fire department.
Mr. President.
Counselor Miles.
I move that ordinance 4617 be passed on its first reading.
Second.
The motion, the second, is to pass ordinance 4617 on its first reading. Is there any discussion? We'll have the clerk call the roll.
Counselor Miles.
Yes.
Counselor Nixon.
Yes.
Counselor Gordon.
Yes.
Counselor McLean.
Yes.
Counselor Lowe.
Yes.
Counselor Crayer.
Yes.
Counselor Adams.
Yes.
Counselor Glenn.
Yes.
Ordinance 4617 has been passed on its first reading by an eight to zero vote. Ordinance 4717.
Authorizing the mayor to enter into a contract with Perry Pro-Tech.
Mr. President.
Counselor McLean.
I move that ordinance 4717 be passed on its first reading.
Second.
The motion, the second, is to pass ordinance 4717 on its first reading. Is there any discussion? We'll have the clerk call the roll.
Counselor Miles.
Yes.
Counselor Nixon.
Yes.
Counselor Gordon.
Yes.
Counselor McLean.
Yes.
Counselor Lowe.
Yes.
Counselor Crayer.
Yes.
Counselor Adams.
Yes.
Counselor Glenn.
Yes.
Order 4717 has been passed on its first reading by an eight to zero vote. Ordinance 4817.
Authorizing the mayor to advertise for bids and enter into a contract for the painting of the St. Paul Elevated Botter Tower.
Mr. President.
Counselor McLean.
I move that ordinance 4817 be passed on its first reading.
Second.
The motion, the second, is to pass ordinance 4817 on its first reading. Is there any discussion?
Mr. President.
Counselor McLean.
Um, just a footnote. This is, seems like a lot of money to paint a water tower, but when you're talking about taking this thing down, making sure there's no rust, painting this thing inside and out to make sure it lasts us for a long time. So, that's the project, and it's an extensive one. And, um, it's, 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 it's,
Counselor Gordon?
Yes.
Counselor McLean?
Yes.
Counselor Lowe?
Yes.
Counselor Crayer?
Yes.
Counselor Adams?
Yes.
Counselor Glenn?
Yes.
Ordinance forty-eight seventeen has been passed on its first reading by an eight to zero vote. Ordinance forty-nine sixteen.
Authorizing the mayor to enter into a contract with Executive Management Services.
Mr. President?
Counselor Gordon?
I move that ordinance forty-nine seventeen be passed on its first reading.
Second.
The motion in the second is to pass ordinance forty-nine seventeen on its first reading. Is there any discussion? Point of order for the law director. Uh, the actual ordinance says oh-four-nine dash one-six.
Yeah, authorize a...
Clean copy?
Okay.
Uh, so, I will amend the motion to authorize the clerk to provide a clean copy. Can I get a second?
Second.
Second, 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 second.
Second, second.
Thanks. All those in favor of the motion to provide a clean copy signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Motion carries. Main motion on the floor is to pass ordinance forty-nine sixteen, forty-nine seventeen on its first reading. Is there any discussion? We'll have the clerk call the roll.
Counselor Miles?
Yes.
Counselor Nixon?
Yes.
Counselor Gordon?
Yes.
Counselor McLean?
Yes.
Counselor Lowe?
Yes.
Counselor Crayer?
Yes.
Counselor Adams?
Yes.
Counselor Glenn?
Yes.
Ordinance forty-nine seventeen has been passed on its first reading by an eight to zero vote with the authority to provide a clean copy with the proper numbering. In, let's see, ordinance fifty seventeen.
Authorizing the mayor to enter into a contract with Merrimore Industries, Inc.
Mr. President?
Counselor Gordon?
I move to pass ordinance fifty seventeen on its first reading.
Second.
The motion in the second is to pass ordinance fifty seventeen on its first reading. Is there any discussion?
Mr. President?
Mr. Counselor Glenn?
Yeah. This is one of the greatest ordinance around which we approve. These kids do a great job, young mans and young ladies do a great job on our parks and they take pride in it and they get out there, clean the bathrooms up and they do a lot of good work around there. And back three or four years ago, I had a contract at Merrimore and I could not, never could, always abstain from it, but I don't work there anymore, so, you know, and they'd be so happy to tell you about it, hey, we work for the city. They really are city employees, I call them city employees, you know, but it's great though that we continue doing this service for Merrimore Industrial. Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor Glenn. Is there any further discussion?
Mr. President?
Counselor McLean?
This has been an ongoing thing with Merrimore for many years and, you know, self-purpose brings to mind.
Yeah.
It gives them something to do and they feel the worth of it and I'm so glad that we've continued this process with them. It is amazing if you're ever there and they open those, you know, restrooms up in the morning, they do take pride in what they do and if there's an issue, I mean, they let that supervisor know and they are supervised well.
Yep.
And they take very good care of what they can do for us and I'm so glad that we have this contract with them. Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor McLean. Is there any further discussion? We'll have the clerk call the roll.
Counselor Miles?
Yes.
Counselor Nixon?
Yes.
Counselor Gordon?
Yes.
Counselor McLean?
Yes.
Counselor Lowe?
Yes.
Counselor Crayer?
Yes.
Counselor Adams?
Yes.
Counselor Glenn?
Yes.
Ordinance fifty seventeen has been passed on its first reading by an eight to zero vote. Ordinance fifty-one seventeen.
Authorizing the mayor to enter into a contract with RD Jones Excavating.
Mr. President?
Counselor Gordon?
I moved past ordinance fifty-one seventeen on its first reading.
Second.
The motion in the second is to pass ordinance fifty-one seventeen on its first reading. Is there any discussion? We'll have the clerk call the roll.
Counselor Miles?
Yes.
Counselor Nixon?
Yes.
Counselor Gordon?
Yes.
Counselor McLean?
Yes.
Counselor Lowe?
Yes.
Counselor Crayer?
Yes.
Counselor Adams?
Yes.
Counselor Glenn?
Yes.
Ordinance fifty-one seventeen has been passed on its first reading by an eight to zero vote. Ordinance fifty-two seventeen.
Amending section four-five-two-point-oh-three of the codified ordinances of Lima, Ohio concerning prohibited standing or parking places.
Mr. President?
Counselor Gordon?
I move that ordinance fifty-two seventeen be placed on its second reading.
Second.
The motion in the second is to place ordinance fifty-two seventeen on second reading. Is there any discussion? All those in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? The motion carries. Ordinance fifty-three seventeen.
Amending section ten-seven-oh-one of the codified ordinances of Lima concerning fees required.
Mr. President?
Counselor Gordon?
I move that ordinance fifty-three seventeen be placed on its second reading.
Second.
The motion in the second is to place ordinance fifty-three seventeen on second reading. Is there any discussion? I have a question. Is that you placing it on second because it involves the off-street parking service?
Yes.
Okay. Thank you for clarifying. Is there any further discussion? All those in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? The motion carries. Ordinance fifty-four seventeen.
Amending section twelve-ninety of the codified ordinances of Lima concerning fees required.
Mr. President?
Counselor Gordon?
I move to place ordinance fifty-four seventeen on the second reading.
Second.
Second.
The motion in the second is to place ordinance fifty-four seventeen on second reading. Is there any discussion? All those in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? The motion carries. Ordinance fifty-five seventeen.
Amending section eighteen-oh-six-point-oh-four of the codified ordinances of Lima, Ohio concerning sidewalks, walkways, driveways, parking spaces, and stairs.
Mr. President?
Counselor Gordon?
I move to place ordinance fifty-five seventeen on its second reading.
Second.
The motion in the second is to place ordinance fifty-five seventeen on second reading. Is there any discussion? All those in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? The motion carries. Ordinance fifty-six seventeen.
Amending section eighteen-oh-six-point-fourteen of the codified ordinances of Lima, Ohio concerning parking of motor vehicles and watercraft.
Mr. President?
Counselor Gordon?
This might come as a great surprise to you. But I moved to pass ordinance fifty-six seventeen on its second reading.
Second.
The motion in the second is to place ordinance fifty-six seventeen on second reading?
Yes, sir.
Surprise.
All those in favor of the motion, sorry, is there any discussion? All those in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? The motion carries. Ordinance fifty-seven seventeen.
Amending chapter ten-twenty-six of the codified ordinances of Lima, Ohio concerning all street parking facilities.
Mr. President?
Counselor Gordon?
I move to place ordinance fifty-seven seventeen on the second reading.
Second.
The motion in the second is to place ordinance fifty-seven seventeen on second reading. Is there any discussion? All those in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? The motion carries. Ordinance fifty-eight seventeen.
Establishing a hundred-and-twenty-day moratorium upon the approval of any application for construction of and/or modifications to telecommunication apparatus and facilities within the right of way of the city.
Mr. President?
Counselor Gordon?
I move to pass ordinance fifty-eight seventeen on its first reading.
Second.
The motion in the second is to pass ordinance fifty-eight seventeen on its first reading. Is there any discussion? We'll have the clerk call the roll.
Counselor Miles?
Yes.
Counselor Nixon?
Yes.
Counselor Gordon?
Yes.
Counselor McLean?
Yes.
Counselor Lowe?
Yes.
Counselor Crayer?
Yes.
Counselor Adams?
Yes.
Counselor Glenn?
Yes.
Ordinance fifty-eight seventeen has been passed on its first reading by an eight to zero vote. miscellaneous business, Counselor Miles?
Uh, thank you, Mr. President. First of all, we just want to just talk about the Lima Stadium Park and how excited I am that we're going to have our dedication coming up here next month here. I know that is a, it's a beautiful addition to the east side quarter of Lima and those coming in on that side of town have asked what, you know, what is that, you know, and so I'm very excited when I tell them what it's going to be here and it really is a beautiful addition. So, I'm glad that we were able to get through the initial stumbling blocks and hurdles that were kind of slowing that process down. So, I'm really happy that we're finally able to see that stadium park dedicated and it's a nice addition to the Spartan Stadium. Thanks to all who were persistent in making, making it a reality. Uh, also, I want to, the citywide prayer that it will be held tomorrow night at Lima Senior High Auditorium. It will be at seven o'clock PM. It is open to everyone who would like to attend. And lastly, um, spring is a week away from today here, so this cold weather hopefully is not here to stay and hopefully we'll be able to see consistent warm weather here. That's all I have.
Thank you, Counselor Miles. Counselor Gordon?
Uh, thank you, Mr. President. First of all, I want to, to call a public works committee meeting to discuss all those things that we put on the second reading. For Tuesday, uh, March twenty-first, immediately following the finance committee meeting.
Second.
Doesn't need a second.
No need a second, okay.
Six thirty. What time is the finance meeting?
Six.
Call it for six-thirty? Okay, anything else?
Um, yeah. I too want to express great excitement about our, the, the citywide prayer and hope that folks will come out to Lima Senior to share in that event. It was a great time last year and, and I'm excited about it, so hopefully we'll see you guys there tomorrow. Um, also, the Northside Neighborhood Association meeting is for Wednesday night, the fifteenth, at seven PM at Saint Luke's Church. And the final thing is I want to remind people to be good to each other. Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor Gordon. Counselor McLean?
Thank you, Mr. President. Just a couple of things. I want to comment a little bit about that stuff that's flowing outside and, you know, we've had some bipolar weather. We've had, uh, March weather in February and February's weather in March, so, uh, don't worry, I'm sure our street guys got that all taken care of, got them on the road, so everything will be cleaned up and taken care of. And I hope everyone had a very nice day in the parade last Saturday. Again, it's cold, they, always is cold for that parade, um, but, uh, I think they had a very good parade and I'm glad that, uh, everything turned out great for them and, um, you know, Todd mentioned that Northside Neighborhood Association was going to have a meeting. We're also going to have a debate, uh, between our mayoral candidates on April the nineteenth, um, at Saint Mark's Church. I believe the starting time is at seven. I think that, uh, that'll give everybody a good chance to discuss things as, uh, with what, what they may bring to the table for us. So, get your questions together, we'll have a piece of paper for you to write down your questions and have someone ask them for you, so, uh, we do appreciate them coming in and talking to us and the community, so, put it on your calendars for April the nineteenth at seven at Saint Mark's. Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you, Counselor McLean. Counselor Lowe?
Thank you, Mr. President. Uh, the Lima Observatory over at Skunover Park and Lima Astronomical Society, uh, are asking for help for those that, uh, want to do some extra, uh, cleaning, wiping down. They have, uh, it's a national landmark and there's going to be a lot of individuals that's going to come to our city in the month of August, uh, to recognize the eclipse that is going to happen. Uh, this is a great group of guys, very dedicated. Uh, some of the members, there's a member there now, I think he's eighty-plus and he's been there since day one. And it's, it's just a good group of guys and they have a lot of history, uh, but if you would like to get involved with them, uh, you can actually go onto their website and look them up and their numbers are on there and, uh, get ahold of them if you're looking for a little extra, if you've got some groups that would like to come out and dedicate some time, uh, they would be very, very appreciative of that. I also want to give credit to, uh, Mr. Roach, and this isn't a hit at Saul because Saul was very good to me, uh, while he was in office, but I, I found, I find Mr. Roach very easy to speak with and, and I appreciate that. Very soft manner, soft tone, but he gets the job done and he does great follow-up and I just want to let everybody know publicly, I, I appreciate you. Uh, there were some things that I needed done on my ward and, and they were done and very expeditiously and, and I just appreciate that and neighbors did too. And, and one of them, uh, Mr. Bob Lewis asked me to pass that on to you also. I need the residents in the Jackson Street and Pearl area to be patient. A lot of individuals have been complaining about the, uh, I'm going to call it a scrapyard. It's full of trailers, metal, wash machines, cars, anything that they can scrap, it's in this yard. And, uh, in one corner, the, uh, east, southeast corner, uh, there's a huge combine of some sort, wagon and it's blocking, if you're headed east on Pearl Street, it blocks the traffic that's coming from the north headed south. And it is very dangerous at that corner and they've been speaking on me, speaking on me, speaking on, speaking on, and I've got several phone calls and I've even had students speak on it, uh, walking to Lima Senior. The issue is this, I've, I've spoken with the Drug Task Force team, they cannot go on that property yet. And, and I know that they told us they was going to handle some stuff, you know, earlier in the summer and it didn't get done, but they're asking me to be patient again, so I'm asking those residents to be patient again. And, you know, some of their issues was, this is only allowed because it's on this certain side of town. Uh, I, I can't say yes and I can't say no to that, but, uh, I'm asking that you give the court system and the attorneys time to do what they need to do to make sure that we can clear that area up, because it is a pretty bad eyesore. And the other thing is, I would like to, uh, recognize, uh, Mr. Mike Burgefield is here this evening. Uh, this is the gentleman, uh, we have spoken several times on Facebook with one another. This is the gentleman who is also seeking, uh, third ward's, uh, seat. Uh, I look forward to future debates with Mike. Uh, he's a good guy and, and I think, uh, either way, the city would be lucky to receive either one of us, so I just want to say, uh, welcome and, uh, let's get ready for some debate, okay? All right, thank you. That's it, Mr. President.
Thank you, Counselor Lowe. Counselor Crayer?
Uh, yeah, Mr. President, first of all, on the fourteenth, there will be a Lakewood West Neighborhood Association meeting at the, uh, Lackner Building on Spring Street, that's at six PM. Janelle Hawke is the president of that organization and she is kind of wonderful and that is a great place to be. If you live in the neighborhood or if you don't, um, live in the Lakewood West area, you're more than welcome to, uh, join up with that organization. Also, I know this is a little bit early, but it is a hope-giving situation. On April twenty-second is the Auto River Cleanup. There are organizations already starting to form. If you don't have one or you want some more information about that, I know that you can, uh, find the Auto River Cleanup, um, on Facebook, um, but start, you know, getting yours, getting your teams ready and, and getting ready for that event, which will be, it's always a great event every year. Um, thirdly, I'd also like to thank the chief, um, also the Sheriff's Department, the Highway Patrol, being out, uh, as a responsible sober person all day on Saturday. It was really comforting to see and helpful and wonderful to chat with police officers on the bike, on their bikes, on the streets. It did help that my, um, neighborhood police officer, my COP officer was out, uh, walked work in the streets, but it was really a good, it was really good. People who were having a great time, um, they didn't, um, there was a lot of good communication. Um, I, I know that the people that I was corralling, that they, uh, they liked seeing officers, like shaking their hand, excuse me, talking to them, find out what kind of, uh, troublemakers were out there. So, it was good and I appreciate it. I appreciate seeing all of the presence out there and how helpful they were, um, and kind as well. They're also very kind. So, thank you, Chief, for, uh, sending them out. And with that, I think that's it. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Counselor Crayer. Counselor Adams?
Nothing this evening, thank you.
Thank you, Counselor Glenn?
Yes, sir. I got a couple of things here on Nollie Street. I know Jesse said the same thing, I got a problem there too.